Check one, two. Checking audio. Test one, two, three. Counselor.
Down check. Counselor Vicente checking in.
You're coming through clear, Counselors Vicente.
It's Mayor Brown just testing my audio. I'll be remote today.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. You're coming through loud and clear.
All right. Call to order. As we begin today's meeting, we would like to acknowledge that we are gathering here today on the treaty territory of the Mississaugas, of the Credit First Nation, and before them, the traditional territory of the Hodenoshonee Huron and Wendat. We also acknowledge the many First Nations, Métis, Inuit, and other global indigenous people that now call Brampton their home. We are honored to live, work, and enjoy this land. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection. All right. You may be seated. Okay. Welcome to our regular council meeting on May 29, 2024. I am Deputy Mayor Singh, and I will be chairing the meeting as Mayor Brown will be participating remotely. All other members are present at today's meeting, in person, I believe, or remotely, except for, and the clerk will summarize.
Thank you. Online, we currently have Counselors Vicente and Mayor Brown, and just one absent today, and that's Counselor Keenan.
Counselor Keenan, okay.
No, I'm on you.
Okay.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Counselor Keenan, for letting us know. Moving on to approval of the agenda, we are now at item two, approval of the agenda. I believe the clerk first has some updates.
Thank you. Yes, we did distribute a revised agenda yesterday at approximately 3:15 PM, and on that, additional items were proclamations, presentation materials, committee summaries of items 12.2 and 12.3, and correspondence related to item 10.3.1, the 2024 Development Charges Study. Also, bylaws 18.8 and 18.9 were published on the revised. And then this morning, we published an additional revised agenda with just one additional item, 14.1.4, and that's written comments from First Gulf regarding the proposed development charge by law.
And that was 14.1.4?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, and I see Counselor Plessey on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I would like to add an announcement for an amazing event that's coming up, and also my penji, Mika, is here, and have her come up and say a few words about it.
If I may, I believe that's to be a delegation, and it's item 7.3.
Either or.
Delegation, so we could ask questions.
Sure. With a photo.
Yes, with the photo after.
So noted. Counselor Power.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to add a delegation from Emmanuel Adibola, who is the Executive Director of A&E for Black Business Empowerment Celebration here at City Hall, June 1, 2024.
Okay. Would that be 7.4?
Thank you. Yes, that would.
And then I would like to add an in-camera item at the request of staff, 19.4, open meeting exception under section 2392K of the Municipal Act 2001. That would be item 19.4, correct? Oh, and Counselor Vicente.
Thank you very much, Acting Mayor. I would like to request that we refer item 13.3 in discussion with regards to the BIA boundaries to the June 26 meeting of council. Had a special with Counsel Keenan about it this morning, and also some requests from the BIA for that referral. Thank you.
Okay. That's a referral to...
June 26.
Would that be, is that a council meeting, June 26?
That's correct.
So would that be a deferral, right? Yeah.
A deferral.
Differe.
Okay. And I see Counselor Plessey on the board again.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'd like to also, all parties weren't able to come together on item 13.2 as of yet, so I'd like to defer that again to the same meeting, and that's the staff report, application of amendment, official plan and zoning bylaw, Glencore and Associates, Mississauga Road, Ward 6.
So that is also a deferral to June 26?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Yeah, we could take that now. Correct to the clerk instead of doing it at the consent motion.
That's an order. Yep.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, so we have a motion moved by Counselor Plessey and seconded by Counselor Power to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Motion carries. Three, declaration of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, or any matter to be considered on today's agenda? Seeing none, that will be so noted. Adoption of minutes. We are now ready to move to the next item of business on today's council agenda item four, minutes. We have the following council minutes before us today. 4.1, Minnetonka City Council, May 15, 2024. Do any members have any question or comments regarding the minutes? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, I have a motion moved by Counselor Santos and seconded by Counselor Tour to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All in favor? The motion carries. Council, as part of our consent motion process, I will read each agenda item that is subject to the consent motion, and any member may verbally identify the item to be held for debate during the meeting. Any item not held for debate will be considered as part of the consent motion and voted on for approval. I'll start reading the relevant agenda items, and members can identify any items to be held for debate. 8.1, staff report regarding government relations matters. Okay. That is in consent. 10.2.1, staff report regarding civil marriage officia designis update recommendation. That is in consent. 10.3.1 is held for public meeting item 7.1. 10.4.1, staff report regarding amendment to building division appointment bylaw 308 2012 to appoint a chief building official. That is in consent. 12.1, minutes, committee of council, May 8, 2024, to be received. That is in consent. 12.2, summary of recommendations, committee of council, May 22, 2024. That is in consent. 12.3, summary of recommendations, planning and development committee, May 27, 2024. That is in consent. 13.1, staff report regarding automated speed enforcement processing center project update and budget amendment. Hold by Counselor Plessey. Okay. 13.2, staff report regarding, that's already, that is deferred, and 13.3 is deferred. 14.1, correspondence regarding item 10.3.1, 2024 Development Charges Studies. I'll hold all of them because we are holding the item itself, so I won't do that. Okay. 16.1, referred matters list. Consent. 19.1, closed session minute, city council, May 15, 2024. That is in consent. 19.2, closed session minutes, committee of council, May 22, 2024. That is in consent. 19.3, open meeting exception under section 2392C NK of the Municipal Act 2001, recommendations. 19.4 is what I added. At 19.3, we will...
They didn't have a verbal update?
Have recommendations. Do you want to hold it? Because we're going, yeah. I'm going to hold it. Okay. And 19.4 was an added item, so the clerk will summarize those items to be included on the consent motion for approval.
Thank you, Chair Singh. So on the consent motion, we will have items 8.1, 10.2.1, 10.4.1, 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, and 16.1, 19.1, 19.2. And then items still on the agenda to be dealt with, we have all items related to the Development Charges Study, public meetings, so that's 10.3.1, as well as 14.1. And also holding, we have items 14.1, 19.3, and 19.4, the added item.
Thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Barr and seconded by Counselor Power to approve the consent motion. All in favor? Motion carries. We have only one announcement today, and that is sponsored by Counselor Barr. Counselor Barr, would you like to speak before? Okay. So we'll ask Shane Loftus, manager of transportation, right-of-way of safety, public works and engineering, will make the announcement on behalf of the Brampton School Traffic Safety Council. Shane, please come forward.
The week of June 3 to 7 is School Guard Crossing Appreciation Week in Brampton and across Ontario. Crossing Guards play an essential role in the communities they serve, helping children cross the roads safely. There are approximately 244 crossing guards in the city of Brampton who serve students from kindergarten to grade five, from the Peel District School Board and the Dufferin-Peel Catholic District School Board. Under the Highway Traffic Act, a crossing guard stop sign has the same lethal authority as a stop sign at an intersection. So drivers who fail to stop could be facing a minimum of $150 fine and three demerit points. So we always ask, please stop when the crossing guard has the stop sign in an upright position and when the guard is entering the roadway, and remain stopped until the children and the crossing guard have safely cleared the roadway. Being a crossing guard is a role that provides great service within our community. We're always looking for dedicated and enthusiastic people to join our team. So I would say if anyone is interested in becoming a school crossing guard, please see the City of Brampton recruitment page, where you'll find a dedicated link with more information on the position. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councillor Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Shane, for that amazing announcement. And crossing guards are the first to be there and the last to leave. And you see them, you know, I was talking to Councillor Plessey too, they always have a smile on their face. They're the happiest people, they're always waving to our children, so I just want to really say thank you to all the crossing guards that work so hard. I know sometimes it can, the weather, it's snowing a lot, or it's really sunny, but they're there, making sure that the kids are crossing safely. So thank you again to all the crossing guards, and thank you, Shane, for that announcement.
Thank you, and thank you, Shane, for the announcement. Moving on to proclamations, I will read the proclamations, which will be presented to the requesting organizations. Okay, CDKL5 Awareness Month. Whereas June is CDKL5 Awareness Month, CDKL5 deficiency disorder is a rare genetic mutation that prevents the body from making essential proteins needed for brain development. Whereas 90% of the individuals affected with the disorder will develop seizures before three months of age, they will also struggle to achieve basic motor, vision, and other basic developmental milestones. Whereas CDKL5 Canada is a registered charitable organization committed to funding innovative research to find a cure for CDKL5 disorder. Whereas they believe in the power of collaboration and helping to unite efforts in curing this devastating disease, and are dedicated to raise much-needed public awareness to advocate and provide support and information to all who deal with the hardships of the disorder. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as CDKL5 Awareness Month in the city of Brampton. The next proclamation is Deaf/Blind Awareness Month. Whereas deaf-blindness is a unique information-gathering disability that incorporates the dual sensory loss of both sight and hearing, individuals who are deaf-blind can live full, meaningful lives as independently as possible with the right supports in place such as intervener services. Whereas the National Deaf/Blind Awareness Working Group is led by groups and organizations in Brampton and across Canada that support individuals who are deaf-blind to increase their independence and improve their quality of life through specialized services. Whereas the National Deaf/Blind Awareness Working Group encourages the promotion of deaf-blindness and National Deaf/Blind Awareness Month through flag raisings and lighting up of local landmarks in communities across Canada. Whereas June should be designated as Deaf/Blind Awareness Month to recognize and celebrate the contributions that individuals who are deaf-blind make in their communities throughout Ontario with the support of interveners who serve as a communication bridge for individuals who are deaf-blind. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Deaf/Blind Awareness Month in the city of Brampton. The next proclamation is Recreation and Parks Month. Whereas June is Recreation and Parks Month, which annually recognizes and celebrates the benefits of quality recreation and parks resources at the local, regional, and provincial levels. Whereas the city of Brampton is steadfast in its commitment to providing parks and recreation amenities that meet the evolving needs of the community both now and in the future, this month creates an opportunity to shine a light on the network of parks, trails, and recreation amenities that make Brampton an excellent place to live and play. Whereas in honor of this month, the city of Brampton is offering a variety of free drop-in programs and special events for residents of all ages to take part in. Whereas the aim of this month is to create a healthier, more vibrant, and more connected community where individuals experience improved physical and mental health, stronger social ties, and a greater appreciation for the natural and cultural resources than a richer city. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Recreation and Parks Month in the city of Brampton. And lastly is Seniors Month. Whereas June is Seniors Month, it is a designated time to recognize and celebrate the contributions and achievements of older adults in Brampton. It's a month dedicated to honoring seniors and highlighting their valuable role in our community. Whereas the city of Brampton is committed to ensuring residents have the services and support they need to stay healthy, age safely, and enjoy a high quality of life. The city of Brampton is continually developing new opportunities to meet the needs of this dynamic generation of older adults. Whereas during this month, older adults are invited to participate in events, activities, and initiatives to acknowledge seniors' positive impact on society and to promote well-being and inclusion. Whereas the result of these activities will create a safe and inviting environment where generations thrive together to create an age-friendly and inclusive community. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Seniors Month in the city of Brampton. And those are all the proclamations for today. Now we're moving on to public delegation and staff presentations. Our next item is 7.1, which is our statutory public meeting regarding proposed development charges bylaw, which we will do together with item 7.2. Please note, public notice regarding this matter was given as follows. City of Brampton website on April 26, 2026. Midweek newspaper print on May 7, 2024, for one week. Caribbean camera print on May 7, 2024, for one week. Toronto Star print on May 9, 2024. Brampton Guardian online on May 9 to 28, 2024. We will have an introduction from our treasurer, Nash Damir, first, followed by a presentation from Craig Binning, a partner with Hemson Consulting, and then we will hear with members of the public and development community who may be interested in speaking on this matter. Yeah, just so the clerk can notice, we have 2026 in there on this first item, just to note for the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. As mentioned, we have a presentation today by our consultants, Hemson Consulting, about the DC study to be renewed in August of this year. Just before we go into that, I would like to take this opportunity to take you through the extensive DC study update process undertaken to arrive at where we are today. The process started almost a year ago in Q1 of 2023 with the establishment of the project governance structure, followed by the retention of the consultants in Q2 of 2023. The balance of 2023 was taken up with the establishment of service levels, development of the growth capital program, and review of existing policies with the involvement of staff from across the organization. Finally, the results, draft rate calculations and policy options were presented to council earlier this year, with your direction taken at the time to reduce the office fees in the study. And then we, this were subsequently shared with members of the development community. We are here today to listen and accept submissions from the public. Staff will continue engagement and consultation process and come back to council on June 26 with the final DC inputs and the bylaw for approval. At this point, I'd like to pass the presentation to Greg from our Hemson Consulting team. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you begin, I forgot to add, there is also a sign-up sheet at the back of the chamber, should you wish to speak after the presentation. You can sign up there to speak. Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
Very good. It's a pleasure to be before council and the interested public today. As indicated, I'm just gonna provide an overview of the Development Charges Background Study as required under the requirements of the legislation. If I just move right through to the third slide, and go right to the next one. The purpose of the meeting today, I'm sorry, just back one slide for me, thank you, that's fine, is just to provide you with an overview of the 2024 Development Charge Background Study. As was indicated, your current development charge bylaw is set to expire August 1 of this year, so we really need to have a new bylaw in place. This is the statutory public meeting. The background study's been available since April 19. It contains a significant amount of detail about how we arrived at the calculated rates, and the proposed bylaws have also been available on the May 14 in accordance with the requirements of the legislation. On the next slide, we recognize that Brampton is in a period of change right now, given the things that are going on, both with the housing pledge targets and also the ongoing service delivery review for the Peel region. And so we're proposing two-phase approach. This is phase one, and we're bringing forward important calculated rates, recognizing that the city is under significant pressure with respect to the cost of delivering road infrastructure and transit infrastructure, and we want to bring forward those rates to ensure that you're funding that important development-related infrastructure. What's then proposed is that there will be another review and update, likely in two to three years' time, once the Peel Transition Board is settled, and we understand exactly what occurs in that, likely that the city will overtake regional road responsibilities. Also, we want to incorporate the housing pledge targets and make sure that the development forecast is in alignment with that, and update the development charges at that time. Just moving on to the next slide. This is the schematic of the overview of the development charge study process that we go through. I've been through this with council, and many in the public will have also seen it. Basically, what we do is to say, how much is the city gonna grow by over our planning horizons? We're going to 2031, or sorry, a 10-year planning horizon for general services, and to 2041 for the roads infrastructure. And then we say, what are the infrastructure needs associated with meeting the needs of the developments that's gonna occur over those planning horizons? Then there's a number of filters and tests and requirements under the legislation. We need to remove some of those costs. And then we're left with the share of the costs that is related to development and eligible for recovery under the Development Charges Act, and we calculate residential and non-residential rates from that process. And as indicated, that's taken us about a year to get to this point today. On the next slide, I just want to provide an overview of the development forecast that forms the basis of the calculations that we've undertaken to date. As I've noted, this does not include the housing pledge targets at this time. However, we're still looking at a significant amount of growth as the city of Brampton continues to grow. For that 10-year planning horizon to 2033, we're looking at adding over 50,000 households, and the population will approach 150,000 persons, and employment about 53,000 employees working within the geographic area of the city. That's used for all of our general services and transit services. For the roads and related capital program, we go out to 2041, where we're looking at adding upwards of 76,000 households over that planning horizon, and the population just exceeding 195,000 persons, and employment 85,000. So this is a robust forecast, and however, once we add in the housing pledge targets, it will be even more aggressive. Onto the next slide. I just want to provide a summary of the capital programs now, and I would just want to also note that Appendix A contains additional details on the growth forecast or development forecast. The other appendices provide line-by-line details on the capital programs that I'm gonna summarize for you at a very high level right now. So the top part of this box deals with those general services, where we're looking at the 10-year planning horizon, 2024 to 2033. That capital program is about $8.8 billion, and you will notice that the lion's share of that relates to the transit services, critical to the success of Brampton, at about $7.4 billion. We do recognize that Brampton anticipates receiving upper-level government funding of about $4.6 billion towards that capital program, and that's been removed from these calculations. The share of the capital program that is related to development and eligible for recovery is identified in that red box, and that's $1.6 billion for this service. That's the amount that we carry forward into those calculations, and that's the amount that we would recover over the next 10 years if we achieve the development forecast. For the roads and related program, which is also a significant component of your rate, this is going out to 2041, the capital program is some $3.3 billion. The majority of that is related to development over that planning horizon, and we would look to recover up to $2.6 billion worth of that cost. That does not reflect any regional costs that the city might acquire over the next coming years. But that is the amount that we've included in the rate calculations. The next slide provides us with a summary of the calculated residential rates reflecting that development forecast and that capital program I just summarized for you. The rate calculated for a single or semi-detached rate is some $70,000 a unit, and I'll compare those with your current rates in a moment. The other types of development, roads and townhouses, or what we call medium-density units, would attract a charge of just over 55,000 a unit. And then within the apartment category, we break it down between large apartments and small apartments. Large apartments being over 750 square feet would attract a charge of just shy of 40,000 a unit, and then small units and small apartments less than that 750 square feet or equal to would attract a charge just over 24,000 a unit. The differentiation in those rates by built form or type of unit reflects different occupancy patterns. The fewer people that live in a unit place less demand on services, so they attract a lower charge. Single and semi-detached units have the highest occupancy, so they attract the highest charge. Just before moving on, I would also like to note that you can see from the pie graph, then we look at the roads and related and the transit infrastructure, that represents about 75% of the charge, and that infrastructure is important for completing the city of Brampton. The next slide provides a summary of the calculated non-residential rates. You can see that we differentiate by type of non-residential land use. The industrial charge is $120.94 per square meter of built floor space. The non-industrial non-office is $225 a square meter, and then major office is $435 a square meter. I think it's important to stress at this time, the council has passed a resolution to provide an exemption for major office, and so that charge would not be levied. Once again, you'll see that the majority of the charge relates to transportation infrastructure in the non-residential charge. The next slides provide us with what the rates would look like compared to your current rates. And we've also included what is currently the required phase-in under the Development Charges Act that was introduced by Bill 23. However, I would note that Bill 185 currently would have the discounting or phase-in of the rates removed. It's my understanding that Bill 185 is before committee today for final reading or final consideration and amendment, and it's likely to go through to the House sometime in the near future. With that said, the current rate for a single or semi-detached unit is some $53,800 per unit. The calculated rate of 70,000 a unit would be an increase of 30%. Under the current provisions of the Development Charges Act, which may be removed, that rate would need to be discounted in year one by 80% or 56,000, and then 85%, 90%, 95% in years one through four, and it wouldn't be until year five that you reach that fully calculated rate. There is the expectation that that mandatory discounting will be removed before the time of this bylaw coming into effect. You can see that most of the rate increases are in this range of about 30%. The medium-density units are increasing more at 39% because of an increase in the number of average persons living in those units. However, the large apartments is actually not increasing as much, by about 23% to reflect changes in occupancy patterns. You may be wondering, why are our rates going up so much? This is really a reflection of, one, a more significant transit capital program that we're including that wasn't included in the last background study. In addition to that, Brampton, like all municipalities across the province, have experienced significant cost pressures with related to transportation or transit infrastructure, and HDR was retained to look at all of the unit costs and bring those costs up to date. So the main drivers of the increase are the capital program for the transit services and the significant pressure on roads costs. And this is in line with the kinds of increases that we're seeing in other growing municipalities across the GTA. The next slide just provides a comparison of rates in other jurisdictions. We've got Brampton sitting in sort of the high end of the middle range of this group of municipalities. Currently, the increases would... Currently, the increases would put you more towards the upper end of that spectrum, and this is for single detached, uh, residential units. I would note that a number of these municipalities will be updating their development charge rates in the coming, uh, years, and so this is always in a state of flux. Also, some of the rates shown on this slide reflect those mandatory discounts. Once those are removed, those municipalities, such as the city of Toronto, will move to their fully calculated rates in the coming year. The next slide provides a similar comparison with respect to the industrial non-residential rates. Uh, Brampton is solidly in the sort of middle end of that range today and will remain there, moving up to the topper part. But once again, some of these rates include discounts and some will be updated in the near future. And so Brampton is likely to remain relatively in the same position as your comparators. The next slide provides a similar comparison for the office rates. And we've shown the fully calculated rates here for Brampton, your current rate there. And last time council chose to discount the calculated rate by some 50%, which is reflected in that $470 a square meter, which also includes the upper tier of the regional charge, which is quite significant. I just want to stress once again, um, that council has passed a resolution to exempt major office, and so those increases will not be reflected on this chart uh, when the bylaw actually comes forward. And but the office development will be subject to the region appeals charge. Just moving on to the next slide. Just the bylaw review. We've reviewed all of the bylaws, made sure that the language definitions are aligned with the current legislation and anticipated changes coming through. One, Bill 185 will make any adjustments necessary over the coming month, given where the legislation ends up landing. I just also want to stress for the public in particular that on April 17th, 2024, council did pass the resolution that I have up on the slide that provides 100% discount for the city of Brampton's, um, development charge rates as it relates to major office development across the city. And that will be reflected in the bylaw that comes before council. Just one other slide and a few other, uh, comments or areas of consideration on the next slide. Other related issues, I just want to stress that the Development Charges Act, in particular under the current changes, um, do not fully fund development-related costs. There are some services that are not eligible. There's, uh, mandatory legislated discounts and exemptions that result in development charge revenues not being collected. And so, um, they don't fully fund development, but they are certainly a major source of funding of important infrastructure. Some of you may also have been following the Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund that was announced as part of the, uh, recent federal budget, which set aside upwards of $6 billion for the funding of development-related infrastructure across the country. Um, there were certain conditions placed on that. One important one is that development charge rates of the municipalities would have to be set at April, uh, rates as of April 2nd, 2024, which is before the increases that I've just indicated to you. We've done some analysis together with staff. That freeze over a three-year period would result in foregone revenues of over $400 million. And I would note that the infrastructure fund has been identified to focus on water and wastewater infrastructure needs, which currently largely sit at the regional level. There's also reference to stormwater and solid waste. However, my understanding is it's going to focus on water wastewater. And so taking advantage of that could be to the detriment of the city. However, I'm also aware that there's ongoing negotiations between, uh, the provincial group and the federal about the particulars of that. So there may be opportunities moving forward, and the city will continue to monitor that. On my next slide, I just want to wrap up with the timeframe when we've largely been over this. This has been an excellent process. I just want to express appreciation for your staff and all the hard work that they've done, uh, with us going through this process. I recognize that we've received a number of submissions over the last few days. We will work with staff to provide written responses to those and make any necessary adjustments to our calculations. And we will bring back that final bylaw for council's consideration at the meeting on June 26th, as is currently proposed. And that is the end of my formal presentation.
Thank you. Uh, do any members have any questions? Okay, um, I have a question, just one. The 750-square-foot, uh, apartment, the different rates. My, just the one thing that just, um, uh, I was thinking about is, you know, always push two-bedroom, three-bedroom type of apartments, right? So are we perhaps, is there an element, uh, through changing the, having different rates disincentivizing, uh, two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms? When I think about families and condos for families, um, I want to encourage more two-bedroom and three-bedrooms. So just wanted your thought on that.
Yes, um, just to the deputy mayor, that's an important consideration that the city has had a, uh, always differentiated that rate, the small unit rate and the apartment and the larger apartment rate, um, to reflect different occupancy patterns and different demands on services. There was an effort by the region of Halton some years ago to collapse down those units for some of the issues that you raised and also for ease of administration. That was appealed and went to the, um, what was then the OMB. And the OMB decided with the developers and said that they had to continue to differentiate the rate. So there would be some challenges. There are other provisions, especially for purpose-built rental, that for those larger units will receive a higher discount under the legislation. So there are some embedded things into the legislation to try to encourage the construction of larger, um, apartments, at least for purpose-built rental.
Okay, I just wanted to flag that and get your thoughts. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. So I have a motion moved by, uh, councillor Plushy and seconded by councillor Tour to receive items 7.1, 7.2, 10.3.1, and all the correspondence in 14.1. All in favor? Motion. Oh, sorry. Apologies, I do. Yes. Uh, do any, does anybody have any, uh, questions? Sorry, sorry, Sylvia. Yeah. So for the public meeting, uh, session, anybody from the audience can come forward, and we have our first speaker from the audience, Sylvia, and that includes online if anybody wants to.
All right. Uh, hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts. I'm resident of Ward III. Um, so I went through this report. Uh, it's a very dense report. There's a huge amount of information. One of the numbers I was looking for is after we factor in how much the city is expecting to get other levels of government and developers from the development charges, how much is the city expected to be on the hook for? How many billions of dollars is the city expected to pony up in the next 10 years? And if we're going to be spending potentially hundreds of millions of dollars per year on growth assets, how are we going to fund that? What is that going to do to our debt charge, to the city's debt load? And how are we going to raise the revenue to pay off that, to service all of that debt? I noticed that there's area chart, uh, area chart was discussed, uh, and hopefully we might see some movement on that in the update in a couple of years. One area to be mindful of is if we're building new single-detached houses on Inspire Boulevard, if the majority of people drive, it's not the end of the world. The MTO tonight is having a public meeting on widening the 410, and we got the 413 in progress. But if 50% of people drive on the Queen Street corridor between downtown and Bramley, the effect on our transportation infrastructure would be absolutely catastrophic. There is simply no way we could have half of those people, of those people being added driving. And so it may be worth looking at if it's possible so that those developments that are inside the urban core, where we need to have it higher transit mode share, if we have more of the development charges move towards funding transit there. Because from what I understand, there are quite a few developers chomping at the bit in order to build there, in order to make sure that the actual growth-related costs are more specific to those units. And I am curious, um, about how Brampton, what resources Brampton Transit will get, because in this, you're proposing, uh, six Zoom lines and, or five Zoom lines, and then the extension here, Ontario, uh, the 502, as well as four different rapid transit projects. And so I'm somewhat curious about what resources I will be given to transit, because I think currently we have a total of one, Chris Flora is the, the one person on this, and I know he's good, but, uh, six Zoom lines and four rapid transit projects may be a bit ambitious for a single person to accomplish in 10 years. That is a lot of that. And then we also may want to consider that this, depending on the results of our pre-IBC study, BRT may not be sufficient for the Steel's Quarter. We are currently at sub-four-minute headways. And with the Chinkuzi Zoom, we're pretty easily looking at below three minutes. There'll be bus running more than every three minutes. Um, and that is a bit concerning to me, because at that point you run into, if you try to add a lot more buses, you have to make sure every single bus gets every single light. And at that point, the entire traffic system needs to be handed over to controlling signals to Brampton Transit, because otherwise you cannot hit those headways. Those are my concerns, and I look forward to seeing later on, as a result of the statutory meeting, some of the feedback from staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any other members have any questions? Anybody in the public? Going once, oh, going twice. And okay, that concludes the public, uh, section. So I'm going to have a motion moved by, uh, councillor Plushy and seconded by councillor Tour to receive, uh, the delegations, the report, and, um, the correspondence uh, in 14.1, 2, 3, and 4. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on, we have a delegation, 7.3, Ride for Raja.
Good morning, Patrick, uh, Mayor Patrick Brown and the city, council of, city of, council of city of Brampton. And a very special thanks to my councillor,
Sorry, don't worry.
Councillor Michael Plushy for inviting us to have the delegation today. Most of us, most of you know about Ride for Raja, because it's part of city of Brampton since 12 years. If this is going to be our 12th annual Ride for Raja. Those who don't know, I'll give you a brief intro that my younger brother, Raja, we lost him in a motorcycle accident in 2012. He was very nice, very giving, uh, very caring brother or Bramtonian. And in order to keep his memory alive, we thought of keeping his thinking alive that he was very giving. So we found, uh, we formed this, um, foundation under his name, Mandeep Singh Chima Charitable Foundation, and we thought that we would support kids that are being raised with the Peel Children Aid Foundation that are, uh, being taken care of by foster parents. When they are on their own after age of 18, that's where there's a system gap, where they have to be on their own and they are now going to university, and they have to support themselves for higher education. Many foundations and organizations like us come in, into place, and we support them for their higher education. We can very proudly say that in last, um, 13, 12 years, we have sponsored Peel Children Aid Foundation for around $500,000, which is a very big, um, very big initiation by our family. We are not funded by government, or we do not keep a single penny from the donations that are being made by any, anybody. All the expenses are taken care of by family. This is our labor of love we like to do in memory of Raja. And we, we, we would like to thank, uh, Mayor Patrick Brown, who announced city, uh, who announced Raja Street in his memory in 2019. And we really want to thank, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Harkeet Singh, who followed up, and this year, the houses are being built on that Raja Street. It is already in Brampton. And all the three builders over there gave us so much honor, and they invited our family to buy house of our choice. The first house before it went to public, our family was given privilege to, uh, buy house over there. And we can proudly say that Raja's family will live there in October 2025. And we really want to thank everybody, all of you, for making that happen. It, it means the whole world for my parents and Raja's family. The reason why we are here today, uh, in, uh, we were doing this ride in Brampton. And in, during COVID, the facilities were closed, and we saw a post by PCA that they really needed more money. And so we thought of, we did not stop even in COVID. So we needed a parking lot and access to washrooms, and they, they had built their new, new building. And so we went to their building, and then we started liking it there. So we carried on there. But Michael Plushy, who is my younger brother also, and by the way, I loved the way you called me Penji. That's what Raja used to call me. You have no clue how you made me feel today. I want to thank you for that. And then Michael Plushy really wanted, and Mayor Brown and all of you, to bring Ride Back to Brampton. But it, there were a little bit of, uh, cost involved, because we are paying from our own pocket. So it was so nice of you all that you said that you can waive those charges. So we are here today if you can take care of those charges, because it, it's a little bit for you guys, but it's a huge amount for us. So we would like to have that. And one more thing that I was driving, when I was driving here, I saw the big screen, the TV. We would like our information to go from June 1st to June 23rd over there. So if you can share, people can see our information and, you know, they can be there, because we would like to have everybody there. So we can proudly say that this year, the Ride for Raja will be, uh, starting from Bram, city of Brampton, Snail Grove Community Center on June 23rd. And on June 23rd, this would have been Raja's 50th birthday on the same day. So this is going to be a very special and big ride this year. And we have goal of raising 100,000, and we are so sure we will raise that money, because with Harley Davidson, Mrs. Saga, we are going to do, with, with their help, we are going to do a raffle draw for, uh, 2024 Soft Tail Standard and Harley Davidson bike. And we are hoping that we can raise a lot of money from there, which our youth in Peel can really use. So that's all from us. And I want to apologize, Anita could not come because of miscommunication on my part. I read the half message, and she could not make it today. So she was very, she was looking forward to be here today also.
That's quite okay. Um, thank you. We have councillor Plushy followed by Mayor Brown.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Thank you, Mika, for coming. Um, and thank you for continuing to put on such an amazing event. Uh, it's always so much fun to take part in these rides and, and to hear the, the roaring thunder of all the, the bikes and, uh, just cruising along. I absolutely love it. Been loving, uh, riding my bike for, for a long, long time. It's, uh, it's a different, uh, it's a different animal out there, and, uh, and we absolutely love it. We love the fact that, you know, you're, a lot of it is, uh, for you is about education and about, you know, ensuring that our riders out there on the streets are, are safe um, and everybody else around them. Um, because if you talk to a, you talk to a motorcycle, uh, rider, they know what they need to do and, and how to keep them safe. It's just everybody else that they have to, they have to kind of worry about sometimes. But, um, you know, always love and support this, uh, this event. I'm glad, so happy to see it back in, in Brampton. Uh, makes me very proud to be a Bramtonian for sure. Um, and then just a, a question, I think we've put the request through to community services already to, uh, to waive the fees. Um, I'm not sure where we were with that, if that was coming back, or...
Through the chair to councillor Plushy. Let me look into and follow back up with you.
Okay, um, because Mika's been here twice. This is her second time, and she did come in, and we asked to waive the fees, so, um, I'm not sure.
It could be, uh, through the chair, it could be in process. I just have to confirm already.
Okay. Um, and we can't really do that now, but I think that it, it, this is our last council meeting before the event. So it just, uh, it has to be done. Um, and that's why we're at, we can't. But let's see what the mayor does, because he has super-duper mayor power.
Okay, thank you councillor Plushy. Uh, Mayor Brown?
Yeah, thank you, um, Deputy Mayor. So I just want to say, uh, to Mika, to the family, obviously. I just want to say to Mika, to the family, obviously Brampton has a deep attachment to Raja, the amount of people he inspired in our, in, in our city. And the fact that a tragedy could blossom into something beautiful, helping the most vulnerable is incredible. I remember going to the first Ride for Raja. I was at Queens Park at the time and friends from Brampton called and said it's an outpouring of love and come and see it. I remember coming and meeting you for the first time and just to see the sea of people that were there to pay tribute to this, this good man who was taking from us too young. It wasn't an outpouring of love. And so I want to thank you for standing for his legacy, continuing to put this event on. I would note that I think my son's first onesie that he ever had was a Ride for Roger onesie that, that you gave him even before he was, he was born. So we still have that photo that we, that we treasure. And so absolutely support Counselor Palashi's request. And maybe just Bill can tell us or, or to the clerk, if this has already been passed, we don't require a motion to waive the fees. I think everyone, of course, agrees to waive the fees for this event and so happy that it's, it's coming back to Brampton. And so procedurally, is there any motion required? And do we need to amend this motion to make it explicitly clear that those, those fees are waived?
Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. I would suggest we, we can confirm whether or not a, a motion was passed previously, but in an abundance of caution, we could in fact pass one today with a two thirds majority vote in order to confirm.
Well, then maybe out of an abundance of caution, the chair received that it was two thirds, I'm sure there is. And I know like in past years, we had incredible turnout from council at this event. And so looking forward to participating again myself with my council colleagues. And note, Counselor Palashi, I will not join you on the back of your, of your motorbike like you offered last year, but I would be there to support the event and proud to do so.
Thank you, Counselor Palashi.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. So maybe if we can stand this down and then have a chat with staff, see where that, I think we asked for a report to come back. So maybe if, let's stand it down for now and you know, if, if that's what it takes to, to get the mayor on the back of my motorcycle, he'll do that for us and I guarantee he'll be on the back. Thanks, Mika.
Thank you very much.
Sure. We'll, we'll stand it down. Should I, yeah, then we'll receive the delegation at that point. So we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah. And moving on. Oh, picture, sorry. Yeah, sorry, picture. Okay, moving on, we have seven point four, a delegation regarding Brampton City Connect Black Business Empowerment Celebration, June first, twenty twenty four, City Hall Conservatory. Can the delegation come forward? Black Business Empowerment Celebration?
That was me.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure who to look at. Good morning, everyone. Hi, okay. Just waiting for. All right. Good morning, everyone. All protocols observed. My name is Emmanuel Adebola. I'm Executive Director at ANA Global. And I'm here to make a presentation of an event we have this Saturday, but also to introduce the things that we're doing to promote entrepreneurship development within the black community of Brampton. If you could just move to next slide. Apologies, I don't see the time moving. So I don't know if my timer started or, okay, I probably shouldn't have said anything. Okay, so about us, we started out middle of last year as the Alliance of Nigerian Entrepreneurs. And the objective, next slide please, the objective was to encourage migrants who had come into Canada, who had sterling careers back home, but are underperforming or underachieving here because of what is available. Our belief is that it is the best, it's best to not just be seek employment, but to actually provide employment. According to Statistics of Canada, only two point one percent of businesses in Canada are owned and operated by the black community. And even Statistics Canada advocates that the way to change the dynamics is to set up businesses. And so that was our mission. But later down, we started with just about eight people, six, it would be exactly a year on the sixteenth of June, we started with just about eight people, but realized very quickly by December of last year that we were limiting ourselves by just focusing on Nigerians because we had grown all of a sudden to one sixty two people. So starting from this year, next slide please, we started with a new name called ANA Global. And our vision is to facilitate professionalism and economic viability among black owned and operated businesses. Next slide please. So now, now we're operating, there are three services offerings we provide. Number one, we're operating as a chamber of commerce, where we bring together people in the black community, have different events, community events, and encourage them to go beyond, you know, to network and get to know each other and have a safe ground where they can communicate with each other. That's number one. Number two, next slide. Number two, we're setting up an entrepreneurship development academy. And this is to ensure that we don't just talk it, we actually teach and train from ground up. And so we set it up in partnership with a number of institutions, including some of the universities outside of Brampton, McMaster University, and also Sheridan College, working to ensure that we actually provide this. I'm actually a student, I'm, I'm on the first cohort of Sheridan College Rice Program, which is for founders of, of the kind of organizations that we have. So we have the Entrepreneurship Development Academy. And the third leg, next slide, is that we have a youth development program, which is one of our key initiatives. The reason why we're here, which is moving to next slide, is that beyond having those programs, we've realized that there's a need to engage with the communities in which we live in. And so next slide, the first thing we did was in December, we had a series of events in the city of Milton, where I live, where we basically had a Remembrance Day event to promote and help people to share their own stories, own their stories and take it to the next level. Next slide, following that, we were in Hamilton for our Black History Month, where we had a youth symposium and a job fair. I had the privilege of presenting an award to the Honorable Minister for Economic Development, Philomena Tasi, who has committed her support to what we do. Next slide, last month, we were in Oakville. And there again, we met with a group, including the director of Sheridan Edge College and other people and the mayor to, to work with how we could support. Next slide, next two slides, I should say. So on the first of June, we're hosting this event here in Brampton, right here at the Conservatory. And the opportunity is to work with you, to formally invite you all to be part of that. The keynote address will be delivered by Mayor Patrick Brown. And essentially, this is our way of supporting the community. How? We, in addition to many things, we are including a funding pitch. And in the funding pitch, there are two categories. There's the startup and the scale up. Startup is to encourage people who have business ideas, who have been running business but under the table, to come out and register. And for that, we'll be giving five hundred dollars each to the winners. We have a sponsor for that, Graylock Matlock Bakery. The second one is the scale up. These are people who've been running businesses but need some help. We have, Sheridan has pledged two one thousand slots for its next, next class of the cohort college starting later this year. So we have lots of things that we're doing. And third of all, which is next slide, is that we would like to partner with the city of Brampton because we know you have a major, next slide, sorry. We know you have a major initiative, next slide, I'm sorry, apologize. We know you have a major initiative in terms of your vision twenty forty. I've read some of the documents. I've seen, for instance, that collaboration is one of the areas in which you are, you are positioning yourselves. And we have different things that we'd like to do, working with you. The last time we were here, we came with one of our members who makes sorrel drink. And I'm looking at the faces of two councillors who had the privilege of tasting out of that. That went viral while we were still here. So I'm looking at you, ma'am, and I'm also looking at you, sir. Thank you very much for welcoming us into your community. Thank you very much. I'll stop here.
Thank you, and perfect timing. Do any members have any questions? Okay, thank you. And I'll receive the delegation and, oh, I think Mayor Brown has his hand up, actually.
That was from the previous discussion, but I will say we always need more Zobo juice at City Hall. Thank you for providing the floor. And I think everyone at council that day enjoyed it.
Thank you very much. I didn't know you were somewhere. And I hear a voice, I don't see your voice.
No, our mayor is listening keenly and still online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion moved by Counselor Power to receive the delegation. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilor Rod Power.
Thank you, thank you. We're moving on. I think we are at thirteen point one because the government relations was put in consent.
If I may, through the chair, item seven point three was the delegation with regard to Ride for Raja event. We did do some quick research and found that the last appearance of that at council was on May third of twenty twenty three, and it was an announcement at that point. So there was no motion passed, but there was a request made by Counselor Palashi to, for staff to work with the group.
To work. So there was a motion to work with the group?
No, there was no motion. It was just noted in the minutes.
Just noted in the minutes? Okay. So there was no formal direction? Do you want to give formal direction right now? Because it's last.
So can you repeat that? We asked, we asked staff to work with the group?
There was just notation in the minutes that staff be requested to work with their group to return the event to Brampton. I provided you via email with that text, if you're able to reference that.
So I, and I'm happy to give staff a little bit more time to figure, like, they know what the numbers are, so they know, so let's, can we stand it down again?
Okay, you, you're looking for the actual numbers? If we, if we do do.
Yeah, and we'll give a response.
Yeah. Commissioner, both.
Through the deputy mayor, if we could just have a few moments, probably maybe if we come back from close, we can have a quick.
That's okay.
There may or may not be fees associated with it, depending on just parking lot usage. So.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, we will do that. So thank you to the clerk's office for the update. So moving on, I think we're at thirteen point one.
No, we also held staff report, oh, sorry, thirteen point one.
Yeah, okay. Staff report regarding automated speed enforcement processing center project update and budget amendment that was held by Counselor Palashi.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. There's a motion. Okay. So in, just, I guess, I'll, I'll try not to ramble too long, but been working on this a long time, coupled with at the region, a number of councillors were working on cameras for, for school buses as well until Mrs. Saga essentially shot that down because for whatever reason, they don't feel the need to keep our kids safe. So in terms of this, in, in trying to, you know, make community safety a high priority, a lot of members around this table and, and specifically the mayor, has been a huge advocate in, in ASE cameras and trying to develop a system that, you know, we could take that one step further and not have Toronto be the, the center where they determine how many, how many fines can be issued and, and bring that in house. So tremendous amount of work from every member of, of this, this council and staff right across the corporation, all hands on deck, working together and, and getting this up and running as, as soon as possible. And I, I fully support this go ahead in terms of the communication with the province, ensuring that all documents need to be signed, filled and stamped by them so we can, we can get the go ahead. The next hundred cameras coming on board, I think is, is huge for the city of Brampton, is huge for the areas in each representative's wards that have identified safety zones, community safety zones that need to be watched. And, and you know, I think those cameras are, are going to go a long way for sure. I said it from the very beginning, if you don't want to get a ticket in a community safety zone, then don't, don't speed. I have no sympathy whatsoever for anybody that's going to take the lives of our children in their hands. And I'll continue to, to, to say that and advocate for lower speeds in our, in our community safety zones. On, on a go forward, and I, I would like to hear from Mayor Brown in terms of, you know, this budget amendment to essentially what his budget is. There's a number of, of full time to the enforcement officers, traffic, HR. And I, what I'd like to see is, and this is, I, I look at this and that's for the full ramp up over, over so many years. And what I'd like to see is maybe at each level, we can, we can support that next phase and, and how many of, of that phase is. So if council supported a hundred new cameras, you know, where from, from, from this budget amendment can we, can we take from, put at that hundred camera level and then have phase two? If it's councils wish to add an additional hundred cameras in the next budget, then maybe at that time, we come back with that next phase of, or level of, of staff complement. So that's what I've, what I'd kind of like to see go forward, would like to have that kind of separated if possible and phased. And I, I really look to staff to, to advise where, what that phasing is and what's needed, what's needed now, what's needed for, you know, that next budget. Budget amendments happen, they happen frequently, but I guess from an outsider looking in, an amendment to a budget is something we didn't think of. Not really the case. It's something we've, this is, you know, we've been working on it and, and it's just, this is when it's come before us. But if for the full transparency of, you know, ASE cameras and the staff complement, I would rather see it coming back to council at those next phases to ensure just that, you know, it's, it's out there and it does get, maybe there's opportunities for us to, for us to change as well. We know that, you know, the, the province doesn't allow kind of the technology aspect of, of giving out fines. We need those officers, yes. But technology can come into play when the one camera grabs the car speeding, the next camera, if it doesn't grab the license plate or if there is no license plate, it doesn't need to go to an officer. Technology can, can weed that out. Or if, you know, that one camera was vandalized for whatever reason. We have a really good response time on the vandalization. But for whatever reason, if that camera is not, is kind of out of order and sending pictures that are, we don't want our officers being backlogged by images that aren't going to be. don't want our officers being backlogged by, uh, images that aren't going to be, uh, sent out as, as a fine. Um, so there's, there's that aspect of it, too, if we can have, you know, technology in the future, not ready yet, fully understood, but maybe that's what we can incorporate in a future phase. I've said a lot? I didn't see a pen in your hand, or anything, no, just kidding. Do you have, sorry, comments?
Yeah, through the chair, uh, thanks for the question, councillor Pleschey. Um, for the positions that we've asked for, and in particular, the enforcement officer positions, um, we had worked, uh, I think we referenced down further in the report, the financial model we developed with KPMG, and as part of that, um, that includes all of our operating assumptions around the number of cameras, the number of images that will come from cameras, the number of images can be processed by an officer, et cetera, et cetera. And given the fact that our rollout schedule is quite aggressive in terms of a hundred by the end of the year, full rollout of a hundred eighty-five by next summer, um, and in combination with the long lead times to hire these particular positions, because there's a mandatory training element that there's, uh, that has to be done through the Ontario Traffic Council, unless they're trained and they pass their test, they have to be designated by the province, um, we, there isn't really a lot of lead time to hire these people for the rollout that we have. So the positions we've asked for in this report, in particular, the, the enforcement officer positions, um, they are really to drive the positions that we have over the course of the next six, eight, ten months, um, and they're really associated with that. I think we've had a buffer of a few, and that's particularly in case we, uh, sign additional partner municipal, client municipalities, uh, because they'll bring on additional workload as well, beyond what we've, um, anticipated for our own. Um, so, uh, I, I guess I would suggest that these positions are really, uh, given that whole issue of the, the, the timing to hire and all these sorts of things, uh, they are really, uh, uh, associated with the rollout schedule we have in place. So we, we are planning not necessarily to hire them all at once, like, it will be phased as the rollout goes on, but there is definitely some, some lead times that are associated with it.
Okay, and I guess that's what we were told, this, like, the first hire would be like seven officers?
Nine.
Nine officers, I keep getting that number confused. So first rollout's nine officers, um, by the time we get that out, get those officers, um, in through training, then we're looking at kind of the next?
Yeah, we probably start the recruitment actually before the other ones have even started, like, it's that, the, the rollout is that quick, like, we're looking, I think, the milestones in the report say forty in September, forty later in the fall, so we'll have to really kind of, uh, do these things in parallel to, to get the staffing in place to where we're going to need it to be.
Okay, um, I guess making that number so close to when the budget's going to be done for the following year, then I, I guess that's, that's where I always have trouble. This budget is, this amendment is not just, it's for this budget, but it's carrying through the next budget, essentially, is what it's going to be doing. And I can pretty much guarantee that we're not going to get to where we are going. It's very aggressive. We're very good at doing, you know, this type of stuff. It's our first time doing kind of this. Um, I would rather see that next phase come in the mayor's budget, and rather this not be kind of a one lump sum. I've never supported that in the past, I won't, I won't support it, uh, going forward, and I, but I do want to certainly give you the opportunity, from my point of view, I just want to give you, have you, um, have you have the opportunity to, um, to get everything started, and to go with, uh, with everything you can do, and if that's nine officers, if that's X number of traffic, um, uh, supervisors, um, and certainly the, uh, the discussions with the province that needs to be had, and that's what I would be, that's what I would be supporting, so I would rather have the next, deferring that next, and to the mayor's budget.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Pleschey, Mayor Brown?
Yeah, um, so, um, similar comments to councillor Pleschey, first of all, great work by, um, staff, I know that you're working on a tight timetable, council, um, you know, set this timetable out, that we wanted this center operational by July, and for those listening, the, the starting point by this was we only have one ticket processing facility in the province, and that is Toronto, they can't handle the volume, and, uh, we were in a position where our speed enforcement cameras simply don't work, and people speeding in front of a, a school were getting away with it. They were evading accountability for their actions, and, you know, with the police not having the time or resources to really have, uh, speed traps like they might have occurred years ago, um, it's led to some reckless driving, and we've seen tragedies in our community. Whenever, you know, with, when these speed enforcement devices go in, they change behavior, and those that don't want to get a big fat ticket simply don't speed, and they won't. This is a voluntary, uh, task for those that, um, want to drive in an egregious reckless manner, and so I am very committed to getting this set up, uh, and I'm excited that we'll be the second facility i- in the province of Ontario, it's going to create good-paying local jobs, and so I do want this set up. I think the twenty positions that, um, are required for the enforcement, um, uh, aspect of this, or the, the processing aspect of this, I'd like to see those embarked upon right away, I believe these will be more than revenue neutral, and so, you know, this in the bigger picture will be a net positive for, for the city, and, you know, o- over a period of time, can help us repay the acquisition of the building that was required to meet the provincial standards. Uh, in terms of the traffic staff and the HR component of this, I like that separated. Um, I believe we have adequate capacity internally for HR that, um, could be involved in, or seconded to, uh, uh, engage in new hires, and I, I would just like to see, um, um, a bit of more of an explanation of how much activity is required on traffic in terms of maintaining these cameras, and so I don't think we need to hire additional traffic staff right away, um, I would prefer that we just proceed with the, the camera processing, ticket processing staff, and I believe, uh, Laura may have a motion to that effect that, that, that we could put forward, and, you know, as councillor Pleschey said, I, um, I'm okay with us being nimble if technology evolves, and if there's technology, I know right now there's provincial requirements in terms of who can process these tickets, but if that changes down the road, certainly we should be nimble as an organization to be able to uptake, uh, new, new technology. Uh, I know right now that may not be the case with the province in terms of how these tickets are processed, but I would note during COVID, there was very significant changes to how the court systems were run, I've never seen technology change as rapidly as it did during COVID, um, so you never know, maybe some of this, uh, uh, provincial regulation will change down the road as well, and these are conversations we can certainly have, and aim of how we can be more effective and efficient, given, um, the technology that, that, that exists. Uh, certainly there are rights that someone that receives a ticket has, and so that, that, you know, is an added factor to this, uh, and it's probably why there are some different requirements the province imposes upon us, but we are working within provincial jurisdiction here, a- and, and I, I just say the fact that our staff have put this together so fast, um, this, this is great for Brampton, and it's going to change private behaviors and create good-paying jobs, so I'm all for proceeding, getting this operational for July, but maybe staff, or, or maybe council can have a discussion based on the revised motion that I believe Laura, um, has prepared.
Would staff like to respond? Yeah, I see.
Thank you, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, we have a, we have prepared a number of options for council's consideration, uh, in revised motions pending the conversation. One thing that I would like to note is, we also acknowledge that there's many factors at play, and behavior changes are one of the things that we would like to, you know, have success stories with. I take great comfort in the KPMG work that's been done, that revenues will be sufficient, and, you know, as, as we roll out and as we expand this initiative, we will be analyzing and coming back to council with updates and requests if needed. However, um, the motions that we have do address some of the things that councillor Pleschey and Mayor Brown have, have tabled right now, and they have been provided to the clerk. I will let Mr. Colb speak a little bit further to those, uh, if you're comfortable doing that now, thank you.
Sure, um, so I think, um, for the clerk, it's scenario three, uh, if it's council's desire to remove the HR and the public works and engineering positions from the, uh, from the set of resolutions here, um, so, uh, we just need to update the resolution to reflect scenario three, which would be to remove Resolution Number Three, um, there's, and then there's a revised resolution for Resolution Number Two, and Resolution Number Five.
So through the chair, I have put those on the screen currently, and if it's the will of council, I can embed them into the motion before you.
Um, I guess we would need some direction, would, would we like these, uh, embedded into the motion, these changes?
I think scenario three was.
Yeah, so I think, uh, if nobody opposed it, I'll move that we, uh, amend the motion accordingly.
Yeah, I'm probably kind of just have a question.
Sure, and, uh, Mayor Brown, oh, councillor Pleschey has a question.
Thank you, Acting Mayor, um, can I just, just around the legacy, uh, fund, um, and using that, uh, reserve, um, is there a plan to pay that back over the course of, you know, X number of years?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we don't know, because we don't know, um, but that's the plan, is to, is to put that money back in terms of that fund, and then I also want to ensure that revenues coming from this is going to the Community Safety Wellbeing, um, Community Safety Office as well. That's a big part of, you know, why we're doing this, in terms of the revenue, we want some of the funding going back into the, to the community, um, and through that Community Safety Office.
So I can speak to both those items. So in respect to the reserve, at the bottom of page eight, there's a table that speaks to the cash flows over, projecting over the five years based on the KPMG analysis, and that includes the paybacks to the reserve, so you can see that that happens over the course of four or five years or so. Um, and then with respect to how money will be reinvested from revenues, um, I know there is some work that is being done in other municipalities, where they're looking at reserves, where things get back, uh, invested back into community safety initiatives and things of that nature, will be, I, obviously because there's the, a lot of capital in the building, that that has to occur first, or, uh, to some extent, we'll, we'll come back with some options, uh, to council at some point to, with a more of a firm way of looking at that, uh, as well.
Okay, I'm being, to see what you can come back with on that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, we have a revised motion on the floor, I'll have it moved by, uh, councillor Pleschey and councillor, uh, Mayor Brown, um, all in favor? Motion carries. Um, I'll give the council, uh, two options, one, we can go into in camera, uh, because I think we've covered everybody, everything, or we could, are we ready for the item to deal with before in camera?
Uh, through the chair, the, the fees for the event are sixteen hundred and two dollars.
Sixteen hundred and two dollars. Wave them, okay, so a motion moved by, uh, councillor Pleschey again, and Mayor Brown, uh, to suspend the procedural bylaw and to waive the fees for Ride for Rajah, I'll take it together, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, so we'll go in camera, I guess, um, for, do we want lunch first, or?
If we can do question period first.
Uh, so we'll go.
Question period first?
Oh, question period before, okay, uh, do any members of council have any questions? Do any members of the public have any questions? Okay, so I'll.
And, and the bylaws as well, the bylaws as well.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting way too ahead of myself, I was getting too excited, okay. I just saw the opportunity to. Okay, um, so moving, uh, the bylaws, we have a motion moved by councillor Fatini and seconded by councillor Maderos to approve the bylaws, all in favor? Motion carries. Our next item is item nineteen, closed session, I have a motion moved by councillor Power and seconded by councillor Maderos to move into closed, to deal with, uh, item nineteen point three and nineteen point four, and, um, all in favor? Okay, and, uh, we will go in closed at, uh, eleven ten. Okay, um, in the continuing interest of transparency and open government, the clerk will report public section, in public session, any outcomes from today's closed session business.
Thank you, I can report that items nineteen point one and nineteen point two were approved on consent, and therefore were not discussed in the closed session. Item nineteen point three, this item was considered, information was received, and a procedural direction was given to refer the item to the June fifth, twenty twenty-four Committee of Council meeting, and item nineteen point four, this item was considered, information was received, and no direction was given.
Okay, our next item of business is item twenty, the confirming bylaw, I have a motion moved by councillor Tour and seconded by councillor Pleschey to approve the confirming bylaw to confirm the proceedings and decisions from this meeting, all in favor? Motion carries. Our last item is adjournment, I have a motion moved by councillor Power and seconded by councillor Bar to adjourn today's meeting, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you, and we'll see you next week at Committee of Council.